Yeah, I agree.
Okay, smart move.
Yeah.
That's on there?
See, Arnold, I have dinner plans at seven. I won't be the one keeping you from that, okay? Now, we should be out here in an hour.
No, no way.
John, well, how about you?
Good.
Hey, Bill.
How are you? Wonderful, I hope not.
Have you heard that Tom is not going to be here?
Now, before I hear about an hour and a half.
I just never know.
Oh, yeah, because nobody's signed in, although I...
He's got a new job. You didn't know whether it'd be on time or not.
Surprised they haven't got a sign.
Or how long he's...
We get to the part case. Phones off. Yeah. Try to get ourselves together.
Yeah.
How are you?
Just did some design out of this thing.
I don't know.
You mean which case?
You just let me go through them for you. He's out of the audience. He's got something.
Yeah.
Brenda, how are you?
How you doing? Fair enough. You know how he's... Coming to...
Okay. Yeah.
He's... But he's sort of... Okay. Nice guy. I get the call from again. See you later. I get the call from again.
Yeah.
I'll be after two. Tommy was telling me he's changed.
Oh, what is it, that? The different banks?
Yeah. Well, that's a good bank.
Any opposition? Any opposition? No one's even opposed to?
Hey, thanks for my... Yeah. Thanks for... Yeah.
Good afternoon. Welcome to the April 14, 2016, meeting of the City County Planning Board. If you would please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Today's meeting is being broadcast live by WISLAM TV Digital Media. It will be rebroadcast at 10:00 a.m. Friday morning and again at 4:00 p.m. Sunday afternoon. Our first order of business today will be the consent agenda. These are items for which the petitioner is requesting withdrawal or continuance, or items for which staff has recommended approval and no one has signed up to speak in opposition. For all of our public hearings today, each side will have a total of 12 minutes. There is no rebuttal period. Once the public hearing is closed and the board goes into work session, no one is permitted to speak unless a planning board member asks a question. Items under Section B of our agenda will require final action by the appropriate elected body, either the City Council or County Commissioners. As such, votes taken by the planning board today are recommendations to go forward to those bodies. If you are addressing the board today, before you begin your comments, please give us your name, address, and zip code for the record. First item of business is approval of the minutes of the March 10, 24, and 28 meetings. Are there any additions or corrections?
Approved.
Motion for Mr. Mulkin, second for Mr. Lamb. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you. Now calling Aaron King to present our consent agenda.
All right. First item is B1, zoning docket W 3292. And this is a request to rezone 2.29 acres from residential, single-family, quadruplex, limited industrial, and general industrial to campus zoning. And you can see the subject property outlined in yellow there. It's on the south side of Rams Drive, east of Salem Avenue. To the north, you've got some CI zoning there for Innovation Quarter. To the east, you've got some general industrial and limited industrial property there for City Yard. And then across Salem Avenue, you have some campus zoning for Salem College. This essentially would be an extension of that campus zoning, and staff is supportive of this general use request.
No one has signed up? Is anyone here opposed to this recommendation? Send none. Declare the public hearing closed.
Approved. Second.
Motion for Mr. Lamb, second for Mr. Mulkin. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Next item is B2, zoning docket W 3293. And this is another request from Salem Academy and College to rezone a little under two and a half acres from RSQ to pedestrian business, limited use zoning. You can see the site there in yellow. It's on the south side of Business 40 at the corner of Church and Cemetery Streets. You can see there are three existing single-family structures on that property. There is a variety of zoning in this area, some central business and central industrial across Business 40, God's Acre, and the old Salem Zone H and IP. And then to the west, you have some PBL rezoning that was approved back in 2014. As you know, that's been developed by Salem College for some student housing. The request that is before you today is essentially the same request. It's the same zoning district and the same exact list of uses that City Council reviewed and approved back in 2014. The only change is this list includes urban agriculture. That use was not in existence in 2014. So this list does include that. Staff is supportive of PBL zoning at this location. We would recommend approval of this request.
Is anyone here opposed to this recommendation? Send none. Declare the public hearing closed.
Approved. Second.
Motion for Mr. Lamb, second for Mr. Mulkin. Any discussion? Who's in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Next item is B3, zoning docket W 3294. And this is a request to rezone a little under eight acres from RS9 to RM12S. And this site was located on the east side of Peters Creek Parkway, west of Sides Road, and south of Clemensville Road. The petitioner did submit a request for withdrawal. They met the automatic deadline. So no vote is needed on this item. It is automatically withdrawn. Next item is B4. It's zoning docket W 3295. And this is a request to rezone three acres from RS9 to residential multifamily, 18 units per acre, special use zoning. And you can see the site located there at the corner of Briar Cliff Road and Renolda Road. Seen this site several times in the past. It came a few years ago for a legacy bank. That request was withdrawn. More recently, last year, it was for a storage facility. That request was redrawn, was withdrawn. And so we're here before you today with the third request. This is for, again, for RM18S. It's for a two-story apartment building, 54 units. You can see the L-shaped building there, kind of in the rear portion of the property. Parking being located between there and Renolda Road, one access point at the far corner onto Renolda Road and another onto Briar Cliff Road. The petitioner did make some concessions on this with the amount of parking facing Renolda Road. Instead of the standard 10-foot street yard, they installed a type-one buffer yard. And along Briar Cliff, where they technically weren't required any vegetation, they are proposing a 20-foot type-two buffer yard to try to soften that impact along Briar Cliff. So we commend the petitioner for trying to work with the neighborhood and help on those. These are the elevations that were submitted with this request. I will note, there was a neighborhood meeting held last night. I know Councilmember McIntosh was there. I think there was a good turnout for that. Just did want to point that out. And staff is supportive of this rezoning request.
Mr. Chairman, you might also notice that we received several emails about this, about people who felt like they didn't know, didn't have enough time with it, were concerned in some way. So just want to call that out to you.
And I'm glad to hear there was a really good turnout last night. What was the sentiment from the people that were there? The residents, rather?
I might call on the petitioner if you want to hear from him. And he could probably give you a better summary of that than I could.
Good afternoon. My name is Bill Scantland. I reside at 1220 Arboretum Drive in Lewisville. The zip there is 27023. I'm the managing member of the BTR Communities Group, the developer requesting this rezoning. We did have a community meeting, albeit close to this meeting, but we did have it last night. I sent out 58 letters to residents surrounding the area and some further back into the neighborhood. We had 18 individual families, groups, show up and sign in, which represented about 25 or 26 folks from the neighborhood. We met yesterday evening over at the Polo Recreation Center from 6:00 to about 7:20 in the evening. Overall, I think my summary would be that it was a favorable meeting. Obviously, questions about a little bit more detail about how we're handling quite a few items. Parking, traffic is always on individuals' minds there. But at the end of the day, quite a few of the petitioners, I mean, sorry, quite a few of the neighbors indicated that they thought that this was a good use for the property. Concerning the comment a moment ago about emails being received with short notice, there were a couple of people that mentioned that at our meeting. It was not I, but it was their neighbors who commented that their sign had been up, notifying that this was going to take place. There had been an email chain within the community, neighborhood as well, and that I had sent out letters as well, of course, as the planning group did on that. So even among the group there, they were, the neighbors are saying, we felt like we had... Most of them are saying, we felt like we had enough time. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have concerning this proposal.
Thank you, sir. No one signed up in opposition? Is anyone here opposed to this recommendation? Send none. Declare the public hearing closed. Second. Motion for Mr. Lamb, second for Mr. Mulkin. Any discussion?
Oh, yeah, I had a couple of questions. The issue with the driveway onto Briar Cliff Road, is that absolutely necessary? I know that there have been other proposals that didn't have a driveway. And I'm just wondering, what's driving the need for the driveway on Briar Cliff?
I might want to call Connie Kirk, Connie James, sorry, Connie James up here to talk about that. Because I know we've looked at some issues before with proximity of access points to that intersection on Renolda and Briar Cliff. And I don't know if it's a spacing issue.
Connie James, City of Winston-Salem DOT. Wanted to explain a little bit about access on Renolda Road in speaking with the North Carolina Department of Transportation. This particular, when is the state road? The applicants will have to get both the city and state driveway permit. The driveways need to be placed as far as possible away from an intersection so that there's less conflict between the movements for folks trying to turn in and out of driveway. So in this particular case, looking at the site layout with the drop-off area in front of the building, where vehicles would circulate underneath the canopy, a driveway, the best location for a driveway would be just to the, I guess, southeast of that, across from the driveway into the other living center here.
Independence Village. Across the street.
And in looking at how that relates to the building layout, that's not the best location internally because it creates conflict points within the site. So having a driveway on Briar Cliff provides a secondary access for the fire department can come in and go out without having to turn around or without them having to provide a turnaround on site. And while the parking is mostly adjacent to Renolda Road, I think that that driveway will get the most activity on Renolda Road and that the Briar Cliff driveway is really incidental to the site. But still necessary from a circulation standpoint for, you know, for larger vehicles such as fire and EMS.
Okay. And is the fact that this is a residential proposal responsible for the need for the fire and emergency access? I mean, what I'm wondering is if this was an office building, would you still require the same driveway layout?
In looking, the fire department would look at the distance that they go into a site because they can back no more than 150 feet. And so that would be their requirement. And just, it really depends, it's site-specific as to what's being proposed and how the site is laid out as to...
So it's the layout of the buildings as well as the amount of driveway space in front of it?
That's right.
Okay. And I think a couple of emailers had raised some issues about the site issues, turning off of Briar Cliff onto Renolda.
Right. Today, there is vegetation that obscures the view around that curb. However, if you look at the site plan and the plantings that are being shown through the sidewalk area to the southeast corner, the existing vegetation is being removed. And the trees that are being shown there would be out of the site triangle, out of the, you know, so they should have a good line of sight if a vehicle were to be pulling out.
Okay. All right, thanks. That answers my question. And I just wanted to ask, I guess, Aaron. Is there, I couldn't really tell from what we had in our packet, but was there any cross-access between this and the RM18 that's next to it that...
No.
Okay.
No.
And what was the other question? The dumpster screening? Is that now going to be a brick?
Yeah, we've got a condition in there for that to be of the brick material, same as the building. And then also to have some evergreen plantings to kind of soften it. So we do have conditions in there for that.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I think the main thing in this for me is that we're moving from a residential zoning to a more intense zoning. We're at a major entrance to a neighborhood. And I truthfully can't tell from the site plan here how dense that buffer will be that will actually cause the neighbors not to feel like they're going into an apartment complex but back into a single-family place. And I don't know if the builder has looked at some other ways to, I guess, make that entrance onto Briar Cliff more elegant or more like it's coming into Briar Cliff. I know right across the road is the entrance monument for Town and Country. And is there any way to make it more like you're entering in still to a residential, single-family rather than an apartment complex? Because, I mean, and I'm further concerned because Ms. James talking about, well, the buffer with the trees is going to be further back. So you have a sight line here. Is there a way to put a, you know, a lower wall there or a wall a certain part of the distance or something like that to help these neighbors out back in there?
It's tough because when you get to that corner of the side, it's very narrow. And you've got, that's where you've got parking. You've got the dumpster sidewalks in that area. So it's very narrow. I don't know, I guess, more than additional plantings. I'm not sure what else you could do there to give it more of a residential feel, per se. I don't know if the applicant wants to come up and...
Or consider a solid hedge that would block the parking lot as you're coming into Briar Cliff or something like that. I think that fits within a buffer. That would meet some of the criteria, wouldn't it?
I guess there's a possibility, depending upon what the petitioner and the board wants to do, to maybe play off of the dumpster screening. That's going to be a brick wall.
Oh, okay.
And that's outside of the site triangle, which is important. So you kind of have limited opportunities there. Maybe play off and extend that.
So that went on up toward Renolda. That could possibly help them or something, yeah. Well, I don't know what the petitioner feels about some ideas of softening that for the neighbors.
I would say that we are willing to work with the recommendations to try to understand what you're saying and understand the concern there. I think it's been expressed, there are limitations on what you'd be able to do on that corner, particularly if, in fact, that intersection is ever modified some, which would probably cut back into this particular parcel. But I would just state for the record that we'd be willing to work with whatever would be acceptable and still be viable from a traffic control standpoint.
Good. Because this has been a quick turnaround from that meeting last night. And I've heard several comments. But if you all are still willing to have that discussion, I think that's a good attitude. And let me also commend you on your meeting last night, from what I heard. That was a difficult situation potentially. And it sounds like you did a good job with that. I appreciate the feedback. Thank you.
Okay. Again...
I might add that if the planning board does that, take action today, then petitioner could certainly work to try to address those suggestions and issues between now and when it comes up for City Council. Thank you.
Okay. We do have a motion for approval. All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you.
All right. Next item is B5, zoning docket W 3296. And this is a request to rezone about 118 acres from general industrial, special use zoning to RS9. And you can see the subject property there in yellow. It's on the south side of Reynolds Park Road between Butler Street and Pleasant Street. I think most folks are familiar with it. It's the Quarry property. So the original request was for RS9 general use zoning. Last night, Councilmember Taylor held a community meeting to get feedback from the folks in this area about this rezoning request. And there were several comments and concerns raised at that meeting. So based on the comments and concerns at that meeting, Councilmember Taylor, on behalf of City Council, has requested that this rezoning request be modified from a general use request to a special use limited request. So what is before you today is RS9L. That's our residential, single-family, 9,000-square-foot special use limited zoning. And the limited is really to limit the usage. And the only proposed use would be recreation facility public. So with that, staff is supportive of this RS9L request, again, with only use being recreation facility public.
Okay, thank you. Is anyone here opposed to that recommendation? Send none. Declare the public hearing closed.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, okay. We have a motion for approval, but Mr. Lamb, second. But Mr. Mulkin, before we vote, Fred Terry had a comment he'd like to make with a recommendation to us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board. My name is Fred Terry. Reside at 1224 Reynolds Forest Drive, Winston-Salem, 27107. Myself and the byrooms have been involved with this particular property since Vulcan donated to the city a couple decades ago. Tell you my age. With the zoning and the growing nature of Forsyth County, we'd just like for the planning board and staff to look at making all parks, having a zoning for all parks. There are at present 24 different zone zoning aspects for the various parks in the county. If we had a zoning, we feel this would be appropriate because even in the UDO, for different parks, you have passive parks, active parks, amusement parks, stuff for batting cages and drag races and all kinds of things. So we feel that if this, for future consideration in the UDO and planning, that any park area be designated as a park and not mangled with RS9, RS7, or whatever. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Of course, that doesn't apply to this case. We do have here the use of park only the way this is being proposed to us now. So we do have a motion for approval on this one. All in favor?
Well, could I, can I ask a question about this? Yeah. I see Mr. Grant in the audience here. You know, from what I heard from staff, I mean, this was a low-use park along the way, only to go back home and discover that there's a phase two to this, which includes convention center, train, housing, large parking, and things like that. And I was wondering how that stage of this thinking was occurring, what the timeline was for that. Because both the UDO change on parking and this one seemed to have some relationship to that phase two that we didn't hear about at our work session. And I don't know, Paul, whether, what you know of the phase two and the designer of that and... No, I don't. But I do want to point out that until just a couple of minutes ago when we changed this to RS9L, this was a general use zoning case. So the site plans or the details of the development are really not part of a zoning decision. And even with the L, there's not a site plan, per se. So this, it's really up to the city to have in place or to put in place at whatever times it feels appropriate, the different phases. So it's not part of the zoning decision, per se, that you've got here. But it's more of a matter of city parks planning in terms of what phases come when. I think we probably have to ask Tim to... He can certainly talk his public information about whatever plans there are for the future. But I just want to warn the planning board that that really isn't part of the conditions or the considerations of this rezoning as it is put before you. But our job is to look at the zoning that is proposed and all the potential uses of it. Yes. For right now, there's only one use. But unless you change that to an RS9S, the details of the site... So the L would keep the next phase from occurring, is what you're saying? No. The L, the L allows on this entire property allows the use of recreation facility public. So it's only if there's an S applied to the rezoning where there is a site plan that designates, well, here's what we're doing now. And here's the second phase and all that. But as you know, with all other zoning, even a second phase, you don't, you don't know and the developer can't guarantee and you can't rely on the developer saying, well, I'm going to do this in five years or seven years or whatever. Is the Winston-Salem Municipal Park Winston-Salem? Or is it a different entity? Yes. It is Parks and Rec? Yes. Known by Parks and Rec? Okay. So that phase two could come in under this L. So what we're considering today, and I just feel like the planning board, if you haven't seen that, that presentation of what was a conference center, an amphitheater, a train running around, different parking options, and the way that it fits into the neighborhood and how the neighborhood goes in there that we're not really thinking of all the potentials on that. Now, I'm assuming, since Mr. Terry didn't bring that up, that he isn't concerned about that either.
Not this time. Not at this time.
Okay. So maybe there's a way that the community will have some kind of input at the future, at the future phases. I guess I would like to hear whether that's under the current bond money or under some kind of, of, type of agreement, public-private, that this might occur or whether it will, in fact, come back to the community prior to this second phase. I think Tim Grant could probably speak to kind of long-range plans. But I believe the answer on the bond money is, the bond money is providing for what is being done right now. With this phase? Right. With this phase?
Right.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Tim Grant, 100 East First Street, I think 27101. There is no phase two right now because there's no phase two funding. Let me just kind of go back. What you were referencing is the overall vision, the master plan vision that was put together for the quarry. With that vision, we had a number of public input meetings and got all kinds of ideas and listed those ideas. When we received funding through the bond package that was passed in the end of 2014, we then went out and hired a firm to come back in to do the master planning with the community for phase one. So with phase one, what you see now is a different version of what the overall master plan was. If we get to the point where we are fortunate enough to get funding for a phase two, we'll go out, we'll have to hire a firm to come back in to do a master plan session for phase two. We will do that in cooperation with the citizens to make sure that what is going to go in the phase two is going to be something they want, and we've got enough money to be able to pay for it. So as we continue to move forward, we will always involve the citizens into that master plan process, whether it's a phase two, three, four, or et cetera.
Thank you, Mr. Grant.
Can I just say one thing about that? I found it a little confusing in looking at the area plan, the southeast Winston-Salem area plan, which the recommendation just simply says to develop the quarry in accordance with the master plan, but there was no plan at all in the area plan. So I think most citizens would look at that, and that wouldn't give them any information. So it just might be helpful to have a little more information out there for people so that they know what is being considered.
So perhaps on future area plans where we have a master plan that's already been prepared and adopted or whatever, we could, as a matter of information, show that in there.
Any other comments? We have a motion for approval. All in favor? Any opposed as unanimous? Thank you.
All right. Next item is C1. It's subdivision 2016-017, and this is for a 12-lot, single-family subdivision on the, I guess that's the west side of Novella Drive and abutting the, I think it's the Sedgmont Village subdivision and Long Grove Drive there to the west. A little bit larger snapshot, it's kind of hard to tell from this aerial. This is kind of south of Sedg Garden and east of Kernerville Road. And you can see the subject property there in yellow. It's about six acres. And you can see it says Novella Court there in that yellow area. There's actually a street constructed there, asphalt curb and gutter street that's there. So the developer is here before you today to request subdivision approval to basically put six lots on each side of that road for a total of 12 lots. This is RS9 zoning, so these lots are at least 9,000 square feet in size. It's not a PRD, so we're not looking at open space or buffers or anything of that nature. And this subdivision would connect to the existing Long Grove Drive. You can see it there on the left-hand side of the site plan. So again, just conventional subdivision for 12 lots. Staff would recommend approval of this request.
Motion, Mr. Lamb second. Mr. Mulligan, any discussion? Those in favor? Any opposed as unanimous? Thank you.
Next item is D1. PBR 2016-02. This is a request for motor vehicle repair maintenance and dismantling and wrecking yard and general industrial zoning. You can see the site there in yellow. It's about four acres in size on the west side of New Walkertown Road, south of Williston Road. And you can see this is in a portion of the county that has a mixture of Forsyth County zoning jurisdiction and Walkertown zoning jurisdiction. So the eastern portion, the skinny portion there where you see WA PBR 1601, is actually in the city limits of Walkertown, and that's really where basically all the activity for the site is occurring. So we did, we've already taken that portion to Walkertown's planning board, and they have approved that portion. So what's before you today is the portion that you see there outlined in red. So just to walk you through the site plan, moving from right to left is New Walkertown Road. You can see one access point off of New Walkertown. You've got a parking area there. Then it's about an 8,000-square-foot building where the motor vehicle repair and dismantling operation would take place. And then moving further left of that is this fenced-in storage area where the cars would be stored. Again, all of that's in Walkertown's jurisdiction. It's already been approved. So what's before you today is what's in the outlined portion in red. To walk you through what's going on there, it's basically the applicant's septic field. They are going to be removing some trees within the middle portion of that site, and they will be planting their required buffer yards around the perimeter of that site. They are not proposing any motor vehicle repair, maintenance, dismantling, or wrecking in that back portion. They're not going to be storing any cars back there. So we had to bring it to you because it is all one site, and that's what's before you today. And staff would recommend approval of this PBR.
Move approval. Second. Motion, Mr. Lamb second. Mr. Mulligan, any discussion? Those in favor? Any opposed as unanimous? Thank you.
All right. And Kirk Erickson is going to present the next two PBR items to you.
Good afternoon, Chairman King, members of the planning board. The next item is D2, PBR 2016-04. The petitioner is Hayes Wofford. The site is the northwest corner of Apple Street and Green Street in the West Salem neighborhood, and this request is seeking alternative compliance for buffer yard requirements in the neighborhood business district, and the site is approximately .69 acres. As you all are aware, there's a few zoning districts in the UDO where petitioners have the ability to request alternative compliance for buffer yards where the adjacent use or adjacent property, it makes sense to consider something beyond just the standard UDO buffer yard requirements. Normally, a type-one buffer yard would be required in this situation, which is a very minimal screen, but in this case, the same property owner owns both parcels of land. You can actually see from this picture here that there's actually an urban agriculture operation going on, not on the subject property, but on the property directly to the south. In fact, you all approved this property for urban agriculture a month or so ago at your work session. So what the petitioner is proposing is this dash line shows where the buffer yard would be required between the petitioner's two parcels of land. What he's proposing is to do some alternative plantings such as peach trees and other fruit-bearing vegetation. This is beyond the standard list of buffer yard plantings, but again, it's in keeping with the agriculture use of the property, and it would also be respectful of the historic use of this property as a farm going back during the 1800s. Staff does recommend approval of this request.
Move approval. Second. Then what would those trees be, though?
On the line? On that line?
No, I don't think...
The trees would have been on that line, and the specific plants that he's requesting are Indian blood cling peaches, Montgomery cherries, Celeste figs, and cultivated blueberries. So again, the plants would be following that red dash line, and they would all be fruiting vegetation.
All right.
He's just planting fruit-bearing tree?
All right.
Okay. I wasn't sure he was planting, but...
That's the farm.
Right down in the middle.
And just to clarify, the impetus behind this is not the urban ag itself. A couple years ago, I believe we approved, is it MBL? We approved an MBL request for the block building you see in the photo, and they are in the process of coming through to get permits for a restaurant/taproom, I think. And so it's that action, because it's adjacent to RS where they have the urban ag, but as part of their mission, sustainability, local foods, those kind of things, they wanted to do an alternative buffer to kind of tie into the urban ag they have on the other and be able to, you know, utilize that vegetation and be able to, you know, use that as part of the local foods movement.
Thank you. We do have a motion for approval. All in favor? Any opposed as unanimous? Thank you.
The next item on your agenda is D3. This is PBR 2016-05. Petitioner is Hampton Inn and Suites. The site is located on the southeast corner of Cherry Street and Third Street, and this request seeks alternative compliance to the Winston overlay district requirements, and it's approximately .6 acres for the site. Again, this is another case where there was an alternative compliance component put into this WO Winston overlay district ordinance when it was recommended by the board and ultimately adopted by city council. Specifically, alternative compliance may be proposed for structures which have design characteristics or unique considerations which are inconsistent with the specific standards of the WO ordinance, but still achieve the intent of the WO ordinance, which in this case is proposing a design that meets the urban form of downtown Winston-Salem. This is the site plan in question. You can see, if I can get the mouse to work here, on Third Street here, you can see that the building is actually pulled up directly on the property line as per the Winston overlay ordinance, so it meets ordinance requirements on that facade. On the Cherry Street facade, portions of the facade do touch that zero-foot setback required by WO, but there's some pieces on this end of the site here where there's up to about a 10-foot or so setback. And again, that's to accommodate some facade variation and elements of architectural interest, which are still in keeping with the Winston overlay ordinance. So staff believes that since this proposed development basically creates its own context in this whole block here, that this would still be in keeping with the mission of the WO district, and staff does recommend approval of the alternative compliance request.
Move approval. Second. Motion, Mr. Lamb second. Mr. Mulligan, any discussion? Those in favor? Any opposed as unanimous? Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Next item is UDO 270. Petitioner is the Planning and Development Services staff. The request is to amend Chapter B of the UDO to revise parking requirements for the use recreation facility public. The current parking requirement for the use recreation facility public is based on the size of the park being considered rather than the uses in that park. In a proposal like Winston-Salem's Quarry Park, which would be very large but includes a significant amount of passive open space, would not need nearly the number of parking spaces currently required by the UDO. You can see the parks in the city here, and Quarry Park is over here. So rather than further complicating existing parking requirements, which work well for most parks, staff is proposing adding an alternative compliance provision to the current ordinance. This would allow a parking study to be prepared by a qualified licensed professional to propose an appropriate amount of parking for the site based on its specific uses. Both city and county recreation and park staff support the proposed change, and staff recommends approval. Are there any questions?
Yeah. I think this question was asked at the work session, but I couldn't remember how this got resolved, which is, what happens when there's a significant change of use in the park that would change the need for parking?
If there was a significant change of use, it would require a new parking study. That would possibly change the amount of parking spaces required for those uses.
Would they require a new zoning permit or change of use?
Well, inspections would have to review it, and if there were other uses that triggered the question of other parking requirements, they would have the choice of meeting the basic parking requirement or doing a new or revised parking study.
So are there some examples, maybe, that inspection could share with us? I mean, the good thing is that our parks are being used, and so, for instance, Haynes Park, which has a long history, is, you know, filled up with parking issues. Salem Lake, which at one time was very quiet fishing hole, is now hard to find a place, and you end up parking on the grass and things like that. Is that an example where inspections would come back and say, well, they're building a new center here for fishing, they're using boats a different way, so therefore, we've got to look at parking a different way?
But keep in mind, under the parking standard that's in the UDO today, if Salem Lake were coming in to be developed, it would require, I think, 4,500 spaces under the current standard.
Right.
4,500 parking spaces. But I think Tanglewood would require between 6,000 and 8,000 parking spaces. But to answer your question, yes. I mean, if they were coming back in through the permitting process and they were adding a new use or, you know, taking up existing parking to expand something and were about to put a new parking in, they would have to supply a new study so that we would take a look at, you know, whether or not they could either meet the requirement that's in the ordinance currently or do the alternative compliance, and we would look at that in conjunction with our transportation staff.
And do you have the flexibility to give the park permission in this parking for it to be permeable? Like, I know there are many areas, I mean, you made that comment about Tanglewood. I bet there have been that many cars over at Tanglewood on some of those occasions and concerts over there, Fourth and July events, but the nice thing is that people can park on the grass or other alternatives like that and not have to create stormwater issues for all of us.
To the extent the UDO allows it, the UDO does allow for what's called overflow parking whenever it's, you know, something that would be for, you know, a couple times a year kind of thing, which, you know, some of those, the large-type festival events like out of Tanglewood, I mean, that's why they use the old polo fields and those kind of things. And in addition to that, stormwater has the ability to approve permeable paving and those kind of things. It doesn't get you 0% impervious, but it would give you credit towards those kind of things. So there is flexibility currently built into the standards, both in the parking and in the stormwater regulations.
Okay. Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone here opposed to this recommendation? Send no? Not declared the public hearing closed? Move approval. Second. Motion, Mr. Lamb second, but Mr. Mulligan, is there any further discussion? Those in favor? Any opposed as unanimous? Thank you. Okay. That completes our agenda. We're down to staff report. Mr. Norby?
Okay. Thank you. First thing I want to mention is you all, I think, got in your packet the copy of the obituary, but our former city-county planning director, Ben Rousey, passed away about a week and a half ago. And so he was here for 17 years, and so I just wanted to kind of, it was a long time ago, but I want to kind of outline for you, it was a pretty significant time in our planning history, so just want to let you know a few things that happened on his watch there. Of course, he was the second city-county planning director, served from 1956 to 73. In '59, there was a major revision of the comprehensive plan completed, and it was, again, revised and updated in 1969. So they were doing comprehensive planning back then, just like you've been doing yourselves. In 1960, the countywide building inspections began for the first time during that. And in 1967, the first county zoning ordinance was adopted. In 1968, there was a major revision of the city zoning ordinance that was completed. So a lot of things happened during that time. Also, downtown revitalization became a concern among city officials in the late '50s and '60s, and some of the first downtown renewal and urban renewal plans were done back then. The first capital improvement plan for the county was done then, including the first plans to buy development rights for land and hold it in reserve for future parks, roads, and other county facilities. And then he also pushed for creating topographic and floodplain mapping, something we take for granted today. So anyway, there was a lot of things that happened during his tenure, but I just wanted to call attention to that. The second thing is the legacy implementation status report that you all approved a couple months ago. We put together a nice little brochure summarizing that. Your chairman is going to be presenting that at the city council meeting this coming Monday, and then we'll be looking for a, probably a county commissioner briefing session on a Thursday afternoon to present that out. We don't have a date yet on that. In terms of work session, we're looking at briefing you all on the southwest area plan. We will have the representative of the Historic Resources Commission, as well as the Community Appearance Commission, present their annual reports to you, and then we'll be bringing you one of our studies that we're doing this time on new uses, such as breweries, distilleries, things like that. That was in your work program. And then looking ahead to your May 12 public hearing, there's only one rezoning case. It's a city zoning case, but we'll also have the southwest area plan public hearing coming up for that. So that is it for staff report.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Norby? Anything? Board members, for the good of the order, any comments?
Motion to adjourn.
The second. The second? We're adjourned.
Thank you, Mr. King.